Okay, welcome everyone to the December 2nd meeting of the Historic Resources Board and Planning Commission. We're gonna start with the Historic Resources Board, we call the HRB. And may we begin by rising and pledging our allegiance to the flag. Elise, do you want to lead us with your injured, even in your injured condition?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call please, Liz?
Commissioner Brettino? Commissioner Mordorana?
There.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Present and accounted for.
Chair DeVries.
Here.
DeVries. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, thank you Victor, sorry for calling you Liz. Well Liz's voice has changed. Each month we set aside time to hear from the public for items that are not on the agenda for the HRB this evening. Are there any public comments for the HRB? Kara, nothing? Okay. There's our city attorney. Public comment is then closed, turning to the next item which is consent. We have affidavit of posting and the minutes of October 7th. Is there any thought about pulling something? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda, both items. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I mean... She almost got whiplash. Can we get a roll call vote for that, please?
Commissioner Brettino? Commissioner Mordorana?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVries?
DeVries.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item four, which is a public hearing on the Historic Resources Design Review, Major Alterations at 36 Franklin Street. And Ariel, I'm assuming you have the report on this?
Um, oh yeah, Chris?
Yeah, I just, this is basically across the street from my house. So I'm gonna be recusing myself in this issue, on this item.
Okay. John, are you there? I don't think I...
Yes.
Do you, do you, John, do you, sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you happen to know whether physical proximity alone without any financial interest is necessary? Or do you just feel for other reasons because you know them or something?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're family friends, I've known them for many years. We, we own two properties within 150 feet, my wife and I.
Alright.
It, it just feels like a...
I gotcha.
Not an appropriate...
More than just physical proximity.
Yeah, and my business is, you know, I do business there and so, you know, I have, they're gonna hopefully improve the value of the property and that's gonna bring my property values up.
I see, okay.
So yeah, I think there is a financial potentially.
Okay, well I appreciate that, thank you Chris. Alright, so HRB member is recused and we'll go forward. And then Ariel, I think you're about to start with your report. Better bring your jacket, it's cold out there. Alright. Are you, are you ready Ariel?
Presentation will be given by Associate Planner Victor Tafoya.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry Victor.
No worries.
For a look, okay.
Alright, good evening Chair and Commissioners. I'm Victor Tafoya, Associate Planner with San Juan Batista. And tonight I will be presenting the Historic Resource Design Review, Major Alteration for the Property at 36 Franklin Road. The permit concerns a set of proposed interior and exterior alterations to an existing single residence. The application comes to you tonight following a full historic evaluation and independent peer review, both of which determine that the structure is not a historical resource under CEQA or local criteria. The subject property is located at 36 Franklin Street with an older residential area outside the city's National Historic District, Historic District, downtown district. The site is developed with a one-story, single-family residence, originally constructed in 1915. From a land use perspective, the property is designed mixed-use in the general plan and zone mixed-use. The project aims to retain the exist, existing single-family use, so we're not changing the use of the intensity of the site. The slide gives you a quick visual sense of where the home sits, how it fits within Franklin Street, streetscape. Okay, to begin, I want to briefly explain how this project came before us. So the application originated from a code enforcement case where staff identified some work that had been performed on the property without required permits. When we reviewed the property, we noticed that it carried a status code of 7R, meaning it had been identified in previous survey work but never formally evaluated. Under San Juan Batista Municipal Code, Section 11-06-020, Section C6, any structure over 45 years old that has not been evaluated must undergo a historical resource evaluation before the city can authorize major alterations or issue any building permits. Okay. Now, switching to some photos, site photos taken of the property. This image captures the north elevation showing the current exterior conditions and areas. This image captures the south elevation showing current exterior conditions and areas of deterioration. To complete the evaluation, the owners retained Met Clovis, a historian and architectural historian who meets the Secretary of Interior's professional qualification standards. She conducted a site visit, reviewed the historic records, and prepared a written evaluation plus DPR 523 form documenting the history and physical evaluation of the house. Her evaluation shows that while the home began as a modest 1915 cottage, it had been extremely altered over time, porch enclosures, additions, mixed siding, and substantial window changes. Based on that cumulative alteration, she determined that the house no longer retains sufficient integrity or significance to meet local, state, or federal criteria and recommendations. Status code 60, meaning found ineligible and not a historical resource. Okay, so to confirm that evaluation, the city obtained an independent peer review from Rincon Consultants. Rincon's architectural historians reviewed the methods, the use of the city's historic context, and the application for CEQA historic resource criteria. Their conclusion was that the Clovis evaluation is professionally prepared and supports the recommendation of status code 60. They agreed that 36 Franklin Street is not a historical resource under CEQA Guidelines Section 15064.5 or under the city's historic preservation ordinance. With both evaluations complete, the city has formally determined that the property is not historic for CEQA and local purposes. Now, turning to the proposed alteration to, to the exterior of the building, most existing windows will be replaced with Pala 250 series venom units and several non-original windows primarily on the side and rear elevations will be removed or consolidated. A new sliding glass will be installed on a side elevation to provide code-compliant egress from a bedroom and multiple rear elevation windows will be removed to accommodate a new primary bedroom closet. For siding, deteriorating, and mismatched areas will be repaired or replaced with tongue and grove lap siding consistent with the front elevation pattern, bringing a more unified appearance to all elevations. On the proposed alterations to the interior, the work is about modernizing and life safety. So new non-structural 2x4 furring walls will be installed to accommodate insulation, updated plumbing, and new electrical runs. A new heating system and ducting will be installed and two bathrooms will be remodeled with some interior walls shifted to improve function and circulation. Existing wood floors will be refurnished with selective board replacements where damaged and supplemental floor joints will be added where the existing floor system is soft or unsupported. Critically, there is no expansion of the building footprint, no increase in height, no changes in use. The home remains a one-story, single-family residence with its current envelope. Under the general plan, the property carries a mixed-use designation and the project is consistent with the designation because it supports goals and policies, including preserving small-town architectural character, maintaining neighborhood scale, and encouraging, encouraging reinvestment in existing housing stock. The improvement proposed here, windows replacement, siding repairs, interior modernization, are all forms of residential reinvestments and they maintain the one-story scale and form that define this part of Franklin Street. From a zoning standpoint, the mixed-use district permits single-family residential uses and the proposed retains that use. There is no expansion of the building footprint, height, or overall intensity. Because the project maintains the existing residential function and the improvements of the building without altering its massing or scale, staff finds that the project is consistent with both the general plan and the zoning designation. Now, turning to the environmental side, staff recommends that the project be found categorically exempt from CEQA under Section 15301, Class 1 Existing Facilities. Class 1 applies when a project involves minor alterations to an existing structure, provided that the work does not increase the building size, footprint, or intensity of use. In this case, all improvements occur within the existing one-story residence and the scope is limited to interior upgrades and modest exterior changes such as window replacement, siding repairs, and the addition of a code-compliant egress door. Importantly, the project does not expand the street, does not intensify the residential use, and does not alter the building's height, footprint, or function. So staff recommends that the Historic Resource Board recommend to the Planning Commission approval of the Historic Resource Design Review, Major Alteration Permit, HRDR 250328, for the proposed interior and exterior alterations at 36 Franklin Street. Staff also recommends that you advise the Planning Commission to find the project categorically exempt from CEQA. Thank you for your attention and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much Victor, and I just wanna comment that, that was an excellent report for your first one, before this board anyway, and job well done, thank you for it. Alright, does anyone have any questions for staff before we, I'm here from the applicant and the public, etcetera? Anything as a follow-up to Victor's presentation, Eddie?
No, no questions, great job, thanks.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Alright.
Thank you.
Let's do that then, let's open up public comment, the applicant I think is here. Anything you'd like to add, or you don't have to, but if there's anything you'd like to say, now's a good time. No? You're good? Okay. To the public in general, anyone? Kara? No feelings on this one? Really? Alright. Yeah, I think that speaks to the thoroughness of your report Victor. And no one else from the public, anyone from Zoomland, Liz? Excellent. Public comment is then closed, back to the Historic Resources Board. Any further comments, questions, follow-up? If not, then I think we're ready for a motion.
I move that the HRB send or recommend approval of this to the Planning Commission.
Excellent, you're second.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Brettino?
Aye.
Commissioner Mordorana is recused. Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Chair DeVries?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
For that plumbing update, did you have any ideas about a good resource for local plumbing? Good luck, I, I know you will, I know you will buddy. And, and good work fixing up that house, it's gonna be cute. And our chicken queen's gonna live there, I think, right? Is that true, both of you? Well that's great, that's great. Good luck with the pro... Sure, right. Oh yeah, Jim's house? Yes, that's right. Fantastic, well good luck, good luck with the project.
Doubling down, not only with the flying shirt, but shorts.
I know. That's, that's kinda his, his thing, man. Yeah, a rain spinner and shorts, that's how Chris rolls. Okay, um... Yeah, yeah, he's going to Italy for like, ever. Um, pardon? You missed an excellent presentation by Victor, by the way. Yeah. Yeah, I know, he did a great job. Okay, then last thing is just, I have five comments from the HRB members, anybody? No? Okay. Planning manager, Ariel, anything to add?
Yes, I have just one quick update. You'll see it on the Planning Commission Agenda, an appointment, our Historic Resource Ordinance update. That Preservation Ordinance update has been, that contract's been with Rincon, has been executed by the City Council in November and we are now going to do some appointments for that subcommittee so we can begin work. As part of the City Council meeting, they did request that a member-at-large. Staff has already been in contact with our Historical Society and...
Good, great idea.
So besides an appointment from the Planning Commissioner, we'll be bringing the City Council in December an appointment for both a member-at-large and a member of the City Council and we will begin work shortly after that.
That's fantastic, that's great news. And the work will consist of overhauling the Historic Resources Ordinance, won't it?
That's correct.
Well, that's great. Were those appointments, are something that, that's confirmed by the HRB or the Planning Commission?
So, the Planning Commission appointment is recommended at, at our meeting in a few minutes and the City Council will do the appointment for a member-at-large.
For the at-large, okay. But that's all to be, that's all in the future, January, January meeting?
Then, it'll be on the City Council Agenda this month.
Okay, great, fantastic, thank you Ariel. And there's not even a spot for the City Manager comments, but if you needed to say anything, you certainly may.
I feel very left out, I must say, but I'm good, no comments from me, thank you.
I think you'll have ample time here in a minute. Okay, well if that's it, is there a motion to adjourn the HRB and we'll jump right into Planning Commission?
Uh, move to adjourn?
Okay, second.
I second that motion.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, roll call vote for that one.
Okay, Commissioner Brettino? Commissioner Mordorana?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Chair DeVries?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, sometimes we take a break, but I think we just cruise right through, what do you guys think?
How we're doing? Good to go.
Let's do it, let's go. Let's go, Planning Commission now then is called to order. Do we have to pledge allegiance again? Chris, do you want to lead us?
Sure.
No, you know what? Eddie needs to lead us, he's got the Marine Corps birthday, doesn't he?
That is true, yes.
So, in, in honor of the Marine Corps birthday, Commissioner Sanchez is gonna lead it.
Alright, whenever you guys are ready, let's go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Simplify.
Right?
Yeah.
Ooh wah! Ooh wah! Exactly, that's right Chris. Good luck for you guys. Alright, and just as we did... What's that? Oh, is she? Oh, okay. We're all gonna get COVID now. Right? Um, okay, like I said, with the HRB each month, we set aside time to hear from the public for items that are not on the agenda, things that are not gonna be discussed on otherwise. Is there anything like that tonight? No? Okay, anything from the public Liz, public comment? Okay. Then, public comment's closed, we're gonna turn now to the consent agenda, which once again is an affidavit of posting and some minutes from November 4th. If there's a need to pull one of those, you could say it now, if not, then we'll take a motion to pass both.
Uh, move to approve the consent agenda?
A second?
Not the minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, you said consent, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I know. Brain's a little bright. And it's been seconded, so we have a motion and a second. Vote, roll call please.
Okay, Commissioner Brettino? Commissioner Mordorana?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Chair DeVries?
Aye.
Motion carries.
First action of mine is that appointment that Ariel just mentioned to the Historic Preservation Ordinance Update Subcommittee. Let's, Sherri, do you want to describe it again, can we just jump right into commission discussion? Why don't you describe what would be involved so that these guys can consider whether it's something they're interested in or not? If you would.
So, we have our Historic Preservation Ordinance. There was an, you know, there's been our original amendment done and this is to do just some additional, you know, cleanup throughout. It's a very well-written ordinance, but just, there are, you know, a few items to maybe look at, allowing, most everything within there requires a major design review application and there's very little that can be reviewed on a staff level and so, you know, taking a look at some of that and just some of the organization and, you know, pieces of that, you know, for example, like signs. Pretty much all signs have to be a major design review application and so, you know, that'd be as an example, you know, something to, you know, take, take a look at. But really making sure that the integrity of preserving our city's historic nature is still, you know, being met. So, it will kind of take it piece by piece and I think, I think we definitely have some good resources connecting with the Historic Society that's gonna be able to help us work, work through that.
Thank you Ariel. And the whole process should take how long and what, what would the meeting requirement be for a subcommittee member? Would be once a week, once a month, what's the time commitment, you think?
We're working to complete this ordinance update in 2026 and so, we'll have... Not weekly meetings, but there'll probably be at least, you know, monthly meetings, you know, to work through getting drafts together, so.
Okay, so a monthly, a meeting once a month?
And are we...
For a year?
Are we looking at the evening or are we looking... So staff is going to work with those that are on, that are assigned to the subcommittee with their schedules and, and try to find a compromise between, you know, the three members that get appointed to find us a meeting times that will work for them.
Um, I, I'm open to it, I have, I definitely have notes on this subject, so, but, but I don't feel that, I don't feel a strong need to be on...
No, I think, I think that counts as you saying you want to do it, so. I'll, I'll, I'll second Chris.
Second.
Now, let's hear from everyone, so Chris is open to it, Elise, how do you?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any, do you have any feelings on wanting to do it?
Um, I am passionate about the historical element.
I know you are.
And San Juan Batista.
I know you are.
But to be honest with you, I think my talents can be better served elsewhere because I've got limited time right now.
Okay.
My impression is that the, we're, I think we're expecting that the consultants will do the heavy lifting here.
That's correct.
And they're gonna, so they'll make an evaluation, bring it to us, we'll critique it, make input, tell them they're crazy or whatever and say we need to go over here, but, yeah, I mean, I, the, the, there definitely appeared to be some serious discrepancies.
Yeah.
Um, in the, in what's currently on the books, so I, I would say it's pretty urgent that we, that we address this. But, but yeah, either way, I don't, I'm, I'm certainly open to it, but I don't feel strongly that I need to be involved.
Okay, thanks Chris. Eddie, how do you feel about it? You ever think of doing this?
No, foremost, I just want to thank Chris for jumping on the grenade. With that said, no, you know, I, I do feel...
Just don't tell my wife.
Right.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Just between those friends here. So, you, you know, with, with that said, I, I feel that you've done, you've already done a lot, a lot of the legwork. I mean, it would just be a seamless transition to pass on the baton, so.
Wow. I get car tracks on my back, am I getting...
Again, thank you Chris.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's great Chris, that you...
Okay.
That you have some, some bandwidth and some feelings towards this, I think that'll
Okay.
serve the community very well.
And, and so this is a one count, one planning commissioner and then a council member and a, and a at-large? Is that the idea? Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Yeah, good enough.
I was just gonna add on, I've, I've obviously been working with that dis ordinance for
Yeah.
decades, so I have some thoughts and just knowing that I can share those with you, bring them to the committee, whatever.
Yeah.
That's, that works out perfectly, so if, if you're willing.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Okay, well then we need a motion to appoint Chris to the, to the subcommittee here.
I move that we appoint Chris Mordorana to the subcommittee.
Fantastic.
I will second that.
Motion and a second to appoint Chris Mordorana to the HRB Historic Res, I'm sorry, the Historic Resources Preservation Update Subcommittee, that's a month full. Can we get a roll call vote on that, please Victor?
Commissioner Brettino? Commissioner Mordorana?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Chair DeVries?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good luck Chris, that's gonna be, that's gonna be... And I don't know if you participated in that Rincon presentation, were you here for that? I think what, one of the goals that they have is to really simplify it and I, I would be all in favor of that because I think simplification will lead to more people following it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So it's gonna be good, good work. Okay, next is the... Oh, I think it's to receive the recommendation that we just made, this is again for 36... Be schizo, no! Now I'm against it. For 36 Franklin, Ariel, do you want to, or Victor, do you want to do a brief recap? We just heard this minutes ago, I think it's still fresh in her minds.
I'm gonna step out again and accuse myself.
Probably true, alright. It'll be less than half an hour.
Okay, Commissioner, as you've heard, this presentation, it's regarding a major historical resource review for 36 Franklin Road, Street. And before you, you have staff's recommendation on, on this project.
I'm sorry, what was that last sentence you said?
So on the screen you have staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission on this project. So, on the screen, you have um, staff's recommendation to the planning commission on this project.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Like I said, it's all fresh in her mind, so, uh, but we still have to go through the protocol, so let's um, open up to public comment. Does anyone want to comment on this one? Okay, it does. Okay.
We do have a good.
Thank you. Please, that. Well, I'm not addressing you on the. One that addresses. And that was something that was mentioned. And for this, we, um, we had a really practical. Anyway, um, she mentioned that the classic cross-street architecture is not referred to in the city's historic context statement. And further that the property types must be evaluated uh, within the city's historic uh, context. And so there's a gap, um, and, um, because the building was built in nineteen fourteen, she chose a theme, cement manhood, which is one of the. But there is no reference to the stories in that context statement. Um, and I know we've got a number of these classic box ones, yeah, I see. Uh, sometimes I call both words, it's one of those like, I see. Uh, there's another one that I knew, that was the lounge, the epic six street, that would not speak of all of them. So, my point is that we need to review and update the city's context statements.
Hmm.
Um, because we're losing our mind. There are others that have been found not historic, because they've been fitted into one of our contexts. Um, which is the period of. So, the trouble that are missing, remind you, couple of context statements. One is the rise of automobile tourism.
Yes.
Because Highway one and one, like, right down the.
Yes.
I believe at one time, they had eleven.
All right.
And so these are all going to be overlooked if we don't have a context feeling of this people accepted. And the other one is warehouses.
Yes.
And we have a lot of those, um, you know, the, the town where the thing they're showing, we've got, we're putting somewhere on island. They're just all behind that, um.
Hmm, hmm.
You know, they're a bunch of them, and these, they have no protection if we don't deal with them in our context statement. And this is different from updating the ordinance. This is a totally separate, if, if basically it's a discussion of the history.
Hmm, hmm. Or give her some more, give her some more time to finish.
This. I hope we maybe maybe even maybe.
I have a better idea. You, no, I'm, the whole time you were talking, I, I was thinking this would be a perfect project for the Historical Society to take on in the form of recommendations that could be made to either the H R B or RingCon or both, because you guys know, you've got the pictures, you've got them, you've got the history as to what these, it's, it's almost philosophical, isn't it? Like, what should, what should, what should be the things in time that we capture to, to bring forward? And I can't think of, I can't think of a group of, I can't think of a group of people that are better situated to do that work. I really can't. Right? At the Luck Museum? Oh, right, uh-huh. Uh-huh, uh-huh.
And so, I don't think that's qualified to do the point of statement.
Well, I think, I think, I think you're qualified, you're qualified to do the work that matters the most in my view, which is to assemble the information, the photo, the data, the history, if you just need someone to format it in the right way, that, that makes sense. Why don't we do this? I'll, I'll commit to talk with the planning manager and the city manager about bringing that idea forward to try to see if we can get you some resources to do that, and that, and the city manager has an idea already.
Uh, through the chair, um, I, I'm happy to uh, work with the Historic Society.
Fantastic.
Work to incorporate that part of our uh, preservation ordinance update.
There we go.
That is not a problem.
How's that? You're welcome. Thank you, Ariel. That's fantastic.
You're welcome.
Because I think those, those uh, those contact statements are really gonna be valuable
Absolutely.
for this community going forward, right? What do you think?
I do. I just, um, beg my ignorance on this, but in, and this instance, and I know it isn't going to change the situation here, but would that have made this? It would, if, if I'm understanding correctly, it would have made this uh, property potentially a historical site, which would have made it much more complex in regards to updating it.
I'm, I'm not sure because she think, she said that two and two places that we.
Right, I, I heard that too. Right.
That's, that's, that's right. That haven't been altered, that haven't been altered as much, right?
Right. And, you know, I'm all, I love this town. I love its history. I, how it is.
Oh, okay. Kara? Kara? Yeah, do you want to put the bus, push the button on that?
I guess, um, my con-
Okay.
My concern with that, Ariel, is um, cost for updates, because if it's, if another building is historical, we want to keep this town as um, healthy, clean, up-to-date, structurally as possible, and I don't want to see us do something that is going to prohibit families from coming in and being able to um, upgrade homes because they are historical, and that has happened many times in the past, so the only thing I will ask with this is that we make sure that um, when we do this, when we make these changes, we make it very, very clear in black and white what you can and cannot do, so it's easy for them to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, city manager.
Comments from the commission are well-received, um, and I would just make note that the Historic Society will help, help craft the recommendations. Those will come back to the board for
That's right.
full review.
Right, that's right. I, I tried to pose it in that way. Okay, um, where were we? Oh, we're talking about, yeah, we're talking about the cartridges, um, place there, public comment, so we heard from Kara. Anyone else from the public on this agenda item or on Zoom? Liz?
The other, um, I'm just raised on Zoom, sure.
Okay, then public comments closed. Returning then back to the commission. Any further comments or questions? And then for me, if there's not, then is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the H R B to the Planning Commission?
I move to approve the H R B recommendation to the Planning Commission.
Is there a second, Eddie?
A little second, though.
Okay, um, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brentno?
Aye.
Commissioner Mordorana? Okay, we're good. Um, Commissioner Sanchez? Chair DeVries?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, so I'm gonna grab Chris. We're waiting for Chris. John, what, what are you here on tonight, John? What are you here on tonight? What matter? Yeah, okay, the development agreement on that? Okay. Hmm? We just got a lot done? Where do we do it, man? Get home, gotta work tonight. Got a project I have to finish tonight. Have been. Continue to. Oh, Chris, one thing I can, um, while you're out, Kara brought forward in, in conjunction with this thing, um, the idea that our contact statements for different historical themes within the city, like highway or roadway history and so forth, our contact statements could use some updating, and then we, and I, I threw, I said, you know, who's the best person, entity to do that, the Historical Society, and she said, if we could have some help, and Ariel said, I'll help you. Now, so that's gonna, gonna get done now, isn't that great? I know, and they're gonna make a recommendation back to the H R B and Planning Commission. Okay, actually, I am five B. This is the Bullard Dalla S J B Alameda Enterprise Development Agreement, otherwise known as a D A. Who's gonna be doing this presentation? Ariel, um, Ashley, or both of you? Ariel?
Um, yes, I will be giving this presentation.
Great.
Thank you. So, uh, this item introduces development agreement associated with the approved gas station project located at the Alameda uh, A P N zero zero two, five two zero zero twelve. Uh, the project had received the following entitlements back on May seventh of twenty twenty uh, four, including site plan and design review, S T R twenty twenty-four dash oh one, conditional use permit, C U P twenty twenty-four dash oh one, and sign program, S P twenty twenty-four dash oh one. The, the development agreement formalizes the city's conditions, ensures compliance with all approved permits, and establishes obligations between the city, the applicant, and the property owner. This presentation provides an overview of the agreement and its role in implementation of the previously approved project. Uh, this development agreement is required under condition of approval number twelve, added specifically to ensure a formal development agreement is executed between the city, the applicant, and owner. Um, a key intent of adding the condition was to address reimbursement of all fees owed to the city, ensuring full cost recovery for city services related to the project. The agreement is guided by state law, the San Juan Batista Municipal Code, Chapter ten dash six, and Government Code Sections uh, six five eight six four through six five eight six nine point five. The city must make the following findings to approve the agreement. That is consistent with the general plan and any specific plan, it's compatible with the land use district and zoning regulations, it supports public convenience and welfare and good land use practice, it's not detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare, and does not negatively affect orderly development or property values. Next slide. Um, in addition, um, the project site previously hosted a larger proposal reviewed in twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen. The earlier project included a car wash and a gas station with twelve pumps, um, over six thousand square feet of building, and convenience store, and quick serve restaurant, but parking site improvements. Um, the environmental review was completed um, of initial study and a mitigated negative declaration, followed by public hearings and approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. The project was later modified due to a court uh, remand on noise impacts and a new initial study, uh, mitigated negative deck and updated environmental review were completed. Our revised project uh, was submitted on February twenty seven, twenty twenty-four, uh, consolidating the updated prior entitlements. The Planning Commission approved the revised project on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, um, as previously stated. The environmental review was completed through that mitigated, negative declaration, um, and the final approval was formalized with Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four, adopting the project with conditions approval. These actions uh, provide the context for the current development agreement, ensuring alignment with prior approvals, sequoit compliance, and Planning Commission direction. Um, the applicants, um, Harmon Buller and Dr. uh, Devandala are requesting the Planning Commission action on the development agreement associated with the previously approved gas station project. Um, staff conducted a review of the Planning Commission's May seventh, twenty twenty-five approval, and um, in review of that, has updated the conditions of approval to ensure they fully align with the approved site plans from the May seventh action, and the certified sequoit documents and applicable zoning uh, regulations. Um, the, the prior entitlements, um, that from May seventh included the convenience store. It said six fuel pump stations, um, it, there's actually uh, seven, uh, if you include the um, so, uh, there's a typo. Um, there are two twenty-five thousand gallon underground fuel tanks, uh, three thousand four hundred forty square foot canopy, uh, one thousand nine hundred seventy-eight square foot lease space, um, in, on the May seventh, um, it had said that there would be a, a non-restaurant. However, the sequoit document, that was not consistent with the sequoit document, the prior entitlements, and our zoning regulations, um, so, uh, this was updated to, um, include a quick service or sit-down restaurant with the prohibition of a drive-through uh, service, so no drive-through is allowed. Um, and that is consistent with the previous entitlements. Um, thirty-nine parking spaces, A E V chargers, three bicycles spaces, um, eighteen point four percent landscaping, and a trash enclosure, and E V C license request. Um, again, the lease space was identified as a non-restaurant commercial space. In the development agreement, this has been updated and is before you today, um, and it is consistent with the sequoit zoning and the previous entitlements. Um, so the updated conditions of approval restore the original allowances for the restaurant use, uh, quick service or sit-down only, with no drive-through permitted, um, as previously reviewed and approved. Um, these revisions ensure that all the documents match with, um, the approved project description, maintain the compliance across, um, all the documents, um, across the history of this project. Um, you can go to next slide, um, so this is the site plan, um, that was approved on May seventh. And go to the next slide. Um, so some background on the uh, design review. So, following the Planning Commission hearing, uh, that was on October third of twenty twenty-three, and then uh, continued to November seventh, twenty twenty-three, um, after that of uh, the review of design, um, at those meetings, an updated set of plans was submitted in January of twenty twenty-four. That plan set and design was what was attached to the May seventh, twenty twenty-four Planning uh, Commission approval, and um, these updated design elements were not captured in the conditions of approval. So incorporated into the development agreement, um, in exhibit of amended conditions of approval um, related to the adopted, um, set of, the adopted uh, plan sets. These revisions ensure that all design-related conditions are consistent with these site plans, staff report, and the Planning Commission presentation from May seventh. Um, the revisions also clarify that the review and approval, um, by a Planning Commission ad hoc would be required for any updates or adjustments and review the final, um, uh, design elements, including, uh, this relates to conditions of approval twelve, plans and diagrams, um, condition approval thirteen, adjustments, condition of approval fourteen, signs, condition of approval in, uh, fifteen improvements, um, condition approval sixteen, landscaping, and condition approval nineteen, colors and materials. Um, the purpose of these revisions, um, were previous conditions referenced outdated plan sets, um, and did not, um, meet the record as a whole. Um, in addition, these revised condition approvals ensure consistency with the May seventh Plan Commission meeting approval and integrate design requirements directly into that development agreement. Also guarantees a cohesive, high-quality design consistent with city standards and, and the approved rustic barn-like style. Next slide. This shows just the north elevation, south elevation of the approved site plans. Next slide. Um, so, this uh, floor plan is of the C store, uh, referenced on the site plans or convenience store. It includes a cleaning area for maintenance and janitorial supplies, storage area for inventory supplies, manager's office for administrative tasks, lock storage for secured items, uh, sales registry area for customer transactions, open sales area for product displays uh, and customer access, food preparation and storage area, a beer kefir refrigerated alcoholic beverages, walk-in cooler for perishable items of walk-in. walk-in cooler for perishable items, a walk-in freezer for frozen goods, restrooms for staff and the public, office for additional administrative, and the layout is designed to support efficient store operations, comply with health and safety sense, and provide adequate space for both staff and customers. Next slide. This is a depiction of the canopy above the fuel pumps. And next slide. So the applicant submitted a master sign program application, and the signed designs are to comply with San Juan Batista's design guidelines. Yes, my apologies. The, as part of the May seventh approval, the building wall signs include that on the main entrance or west elevation, it'll read the Alameda. On the side entrance or north elevation, it reads the Alameda. On the canopy, as depicted on the north and south elevations, it will read seventy-six tax corner. On the monument sign, it will read the Alameda includes two tenant sign spaces for convenience store and lease space, and three fuel pricing signs. And that location of the monument sign will be at the corner of State Highway one fifty-six and the Alameda. All sign details will be finalized prior to building permit issuance, and signs will follow the state's design standards. Next slide. This was emailed to you and is printed before you. It's an updated Exhibit A that just includes not just the Resolution twenty fourteen oh four, but all the mitigation measures and conditions of approval that were adopted as part of the May seventh. In addition to this, the neighboring businesses have expressed concerns about construction impacts. The mitigation measures, specifically mitigation measures nineteen and twenty, restrict the following. The construction hours are between seven thirty a.m. and six p.m., Monday through Saturday. Loud equipment, vibrating truck backup alarms, gas-powered combustion tools, et cetera, are limited to between nine a.m. and four p.m., Monday through Saturday. And this is part of the approvals as a whole. And these ensure that construction minimizes disrupting surrounding businesses while complying with the appropriate mitigation measures. Next slide. In addition to the packet, Exhibit G, the First Amendment reimbursement agreement, it included just the resolution, but not the terms of the reimbursement agreements. What was outlined in there and was provided a copy tonight is the purpose is updating twenty fifteen reimbursement agreement for a right turn lane, establish cost reimbursement fair share and timelines. The Alameda Enterprise acquired the San Juan Batista's development in January of twenty twenty-two, and the right turn lane originally deferred until twenty thirty-five was now built with the project. And it reflected the updated costs of eight hundred and thirty thousand in the fair share based on the twenty twenty-two cost allocation. Next slide. So the Alameda Enterprise obligation reimburses reimburses the city for the right turn lane cost with payment due within thirty days of invoicing and contributions capped at its fair share. Cost increases may extend the agreement term. The city reimbursement, the Alameda is repaid for any costs above fair share through through annual installments of twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-four funded by traffic impact fees, extractions, or other project-generated revenues. Total reimbursement estimated at around four hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two. The future development must pay proportional fair share fees, which the city applies towards reimbursing the Alameda. Half of the project impact fees are deferred until occupancy. Grants secured by the city reduce Alameda's share. I have not seen those grants permitting and compliance, but it was mentioned as part of this reimbursement agreement, but I haven't seen that there have been any grants. Permitting and compliance city issues permit once conditions are met ensures that the prevailing wage, compliance, and expenditures review. The new term lasts until October thirty-first, twenty forty-two, unless extended for significant cost increases. The legal formalities and exhibits provide supporting documentation, including the original agreement, the twenty twenty-two grantee, and the cost allocation study. So for the consideration to the city, the, well, what is included as part of the development agreement is in relationship to the right turn lane contribution that the developer is to pay their fair share for the proposed right turn lane, and it, we look at covering the acquisition costs, city staff, consultant attorney fees, development impact fees due upon issuance of occupancy for the improvements and public benefits. However, it does relate back to the twenty twenty-two reimbursement agreement as part of the full entitlements of fair share. An updated traffic analysis doesn't need to be done as to incorporated any updated construction costs. Next slide. So the project is consistent with the city's commercial zoning district and is well-designed to integrate with surrounding land uses. ADA accessibility, parking, and landscaping standards are fully met. The project for zoning compliances, project satisfies all requirements for the commercial district, including lot area with density building, height setbacks, floor area ratio, parking, and landscaping. No variances are required, and the proposed use is permitted. Key compliance metrics are summarized, and they, and the project, that was part of your, the staff report, and the project meets or exceeds the standards for lot size, building coverage, height, parking, and landscaping. The project for sequel compliance, the project, as for the development agreement, the project site is an undeveloped one point one-two acre parcel, and under P R C twenty-one zero six five, development agreement does not constitute a project because it proposes no physical change or alteration in land use, and is also statutorily exempt from further sequel review under P R C twenty-one zero eight three point B, since maintains its status quo and does not introduce any new environmental impacts. And as discussed previously, the mitigated declaration was done as part of the project approval, and that twenty twenty-four amendment to the project had an addendum to that, that M and D. Public outreach notice, a public hearing was mailed to property owners with interior fee and published in a newspaper. No public comments received to date on the development agreement. As I do have, and next slide. I do have a updated staff recommendation that the planning commission reviewed the presentation, public comments, proposed Resolution regarding development agreement that the Planning Commission has asked to forward a recommendation to the City Council. First, to adopt a resolution recommending the City Council approve and authorize a development agreement between Alameda Enterprises and the City San Juan Batista. But as part of your motion to include the updated Exhibit A for Resolution twenty fourteen oh four, which was approved with approved mitigation measures as presented, and include Exhibit G, the First Amendment to the reimbursement agreement that outlines the agreement specifically in addition to the resolution. Two, to determine sequo applicability, and that it is exempt and does not constitute as a project. And thirdly, as part of your deliberation and consideration, and as a whole of your recommendation, should evaluate the benefits to the city and the public, including infrastructure improvements, mitigation measures, and contributions towards traffic and community impacts, ensure that development agreement balances private development interests with community priorities and public benefit objectives. I'm available for any questions, and the applicants, both Harmon Bullard and Dr. Devendalo are online as well, as well as their architect, Fred Avila.
Or Alonso, both applicants and the designer?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, that was a mouthful.
Yes.
Thank you for, thank you for that great, thorough report, Ariel. Let's start by just seeing if there are any follow-up questions based on what Ariel was just able to present. Eddie, do you have anything right now?
Well, I just think I need some clarification on my end. So it looks like, from what I understood, was that we are gonna request another traffic impact report, right? I was just looking at, you know, I just pulled some quick numbers through the U.S. Census, U.S. Census Bureau. In twenty fourteen, San Juan Batista had one thousand eight hundred sixty-two residents, give or take, and currently we're at twenty-one twenty. Looking at Hollister, because that, you know, it's in our county, and we got a lot of traffic there. Twenty fourteen, looking at thirty-five thousand four hundred and fifteen, give or take. And for now, that, you know, jumped ten K to forty-five, close to forty-six thousand dollars, forty-six thousand residents in Hollister. So, yeah, I feel that making a push to getting an updated traffic would definitely, would definitely be beneficial, but also depending on when we start on breaking ground, if there's any way that we can forecast future growth. That's all I have.
Through, through the chair. So it was based on a traffic analysis back from twenty fourteen, and so they're all, that reimbursement from twenty twenty-two, you'll read in there, it says estimated cost, and that's because an updated Nexus study as part of that traffic analysis needs to be done to look at the full updated construction costs and their fair share. That is being worked on by staff through a consulting firm, and we will, once we have those updated urban costs and the applicant's updated fair share contribution, that will, we can bring back that information.
So, so just to summarize what I hear both of you saying, Commissioner Sanchez says, I want to make sure that whatever numbers are used are based on the latest data and figures, and you're saying, yes, they will be?
Yes.
Okay. How do you feel about that? Excellent. Chris, to release anything to add right now? We're gonna hear from the public and so forth. Chris, I know you have a lot of thoughts, but anything just based on the presentation?
It was the, on the traffic, I think that Copper Leaf was, was built after that original from twenty fourteen. The, the, the initial work that was done on this from twenty fourteen predates Copper Leaf being added. So that was anticipated in their, in their traffic mitigation measures. So, and now, so since that time, we've implemented some changes. We're in the process of updating the sphere of influence, and we've included an urban growth boundary that would, is likely going to curb much in the way of additional growth out there where that being, you know, would be serviced by that road. So I'm, I think we're, we're probably in pretty good shape there, but we definitely need those numbers. I will say that it is my belief that the previous, that the staff at, from twenty fourteen had a habit of underestimating costs badly in the hopes that things would get passed. And so what, now that we see this delta of three or four times the original estimate to, to, to construction today, I'm not that surprised, I'm disappointed, but I, I think it's, it is really, really important that we have a solid handle on that, and that we're not asking some, an engineer randomly to give us a quotation on something that we need to have a pretty solid plan around what needs to be constructed and have, you know, a legitimate paving contractor, contractor that is licensed to do this sort of work, be looking at it, because this is, this is a pretty dramatic cost. I, I wanted to ask a question about the, the reimbursement. It, it was, so the reimbursement, basically, the applicants are fronting the money for the construction, and then they're responsible for whatever is determined to be their fair share of that. So, and I'll just use round numbers. So if, if the fair share was determined to be fifty percent, and the construction cost is eight hundred thousand, they're gonna pay the eight hundred thousand upfront. They're ultimately, they're responsible for, for paying four hundred of that. The, the, the four hundred that they're not responsible for, the city would be paying back to them in annual installments of approximately twenty thousand dollars?
It might be, sorry, monthly installments?
Of twenty, not twenty thousand dollars, though.
That was the estimate that had, in the twenty twenty-two, using the cost of fair share they had at that time, they had that estimate.
Of twenty thousand dollars per month?
Twenty.
Like an annualized?
Sorry, twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-four to continue each year.
Each, okay, so that was an annualized number.
Forty-two.
And so that.
Basically twenty equal annual installment.
Got it, got it, okay, okay. Okay. Okay, so I just want, that, that, now it's making more sense. Well, we had a previous discussion where there was just, the detail was, was sort of missing. Now that, that is much clearer. I think it's difficult to get our head around some of those numbers until we get a, you know, until we get a, a, a little more concrete value on this, because that, that number's likely then, and we maybe could do the math, but that number's gonna be a big number. And it's supposed to be reimbursed out of fees for any development that's done that where someone would, if, if, for instance, someone on the other side down that road put in, say they put in a development of, a commercial development, and then there would be a determination of their fair share. And if that was twenty percent, then they would be on the hook for, for a hundred thousand dollars or whatever that the number is. It, just again, and I'm not, not exact, but.
Yeah, the, in the terms of the twenty twenty-two agreement, it stipulates that we are required to pay back whether or not we've collected.
Understood, understood. But if there is some further development, then that would, that, that money would come to the city, and then that city would, the city would then pass it on to the, these applicants, the, the gas station project owners.
Yes, any, any other project that was required to pay fair share to that impact would then, you know, in turn be paying the city.
Right, and with that money, with that, if, if, for instance, there was a hundred thousand dollar payment made to us for a fair share payment, would we immediately transmit that entire amount to them?
That's not how the twenty twenty-two reimbursement agreement is outlined. It's outlined of annual.
Just the annual payments.
Installments, that number would be modified because.
Right, 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 because we're, it's all, we're, yeah, okay, got it, okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I got hung up on that, because that was, there was, that was a discrepancy that I, I was apparent to me. The, the challenge I have with this is that we, I literally got this packet on Monday, and it is a lot of material, and I am very, very concerned that I have not had a chance to adequately review it in any way, shape, or form. And I've seen, unfortunately, two or three occasions where that has happened, where the development agreements have been pushed through, and there were some unintended consequences because there was a lack of understanding and a lack of certainly sophistication and understanding on my part. And I, I'm not willing to do that again. So I, first of all, would like to apologize to the applicants. I know that the, our, the, the, the changes that we've gone through here at the city are, are, I would guess, are the cause for it. We've got new staff, we've got really good capable staff now, but unfortunately, the work product that is, is just a little muddled, and I have not had a chance to adequately review it, so I am not in favor of moving this forward.
As, as.
As it stands today, and I'm very willing to, to, to push through this, you know, over the next week or two, do anything I can in terms of, you know, having a special meeting, if we need to have a special meeting, because I know. Uh do anything I can in terms of uh so, you know, for uh having a special meeting, if we need to have a special meeting, because I know. You know, time is money, as they say, it sounds right, but uh I know that we're hanging them up, and I don't feel good about that, but I cannot in good conscience. Um vote to pass this on.
Maybe it's, a- as you and I talked about, maybe it's not binary, maybe we can't get all of the needs met and keep um the applicant on track. And kind of fulfill some of their timing expectations. We'll see where that goes. Um Liz, did you have any comments just for uh based on the staff report? We're gonna get more into things as they come up before public comment.
Uh, yeah, I do, I forgot, I'm sorry. Okay, um in your report, you mentioned about grants, if any grants were obtained, um that uh they would benefit the Alameda. Um will they not benefit the city as well?
Sorry, let me just make a clarification. It uh it referenced. Obtaining grants in the, I believe, the reimbursement um agreement and. But I have not seen, we haven't collected any, we haven't collected any grant money.
Right.
To date. Uh but it was talked about that. That.
Okay, well. Here's my thought, I want this base, I would like to have this space covered simply for the fact that if we are able to in whatever way, shape or form. Obtain those grants, I would like the city to also benefit from those grants, not just from the Alameda. Does uh that make sense?
Yeah.
Just um find a clarification, and I, we're digesting this kind of on the fly, so I apologize. The way I read the reimbursement agreement was that the city, if grants came our way for the. For the construction of the right-hand turn lane specifically, so when you say benefit the city. I just need a little clarification, because it's not necessarily just benefiting the developer. It's going towards the right-hand turn lane, which benefits. A lot of things, a lot of city, county, okay, just want to make sure I understand.
The the way I understood this, as it was. Read to us. If there, if we were to find or obtain a grant, um it did not say. It said that the Alameda would be the beneficiary of that, and I want to make sure that um. Those that are involved, i.e. the city that is paying for this, gets. A break on our portion of the cost as well, that's what I'm saying.
I understand what you're meaning. You're asking if the city obtains grants, who benefits, and does that go against our total? Repayment on the reimbursement, is that the question?
Yes, because the way it read, it sounded like only the Alameda would be the beneficiary of any reduction in costs. I want to make sure that it's fair fifty fifty, because if they were not going in, we would not have this expense as of right now.
Understood.
Thank you. All right, um. Um you already addressed the fair share cost, the twenty twenty two reimbursement agreement, I have a number of questions about that. Um does it say in there that we specifically need to give them? Actual dollars, or can we um give them um? Remuneration via other ways, i.e. reduction in taxes, reduction in water bill, so on and so forth. Right now, we are financially um viable, we are financially. Sound for the moment, but we've got some big expenses coming up, and I am not inclined to give. Funding if we cold hard cash, if we can do it another way legally, obviously.
It's not stipulated in the uh current uh reimbursement agreement. The reimbursement agreement would have to be amended to incorporate um aspects as described.
Okay. Ah. Okay, um. Speaking of the right-hand turn lane. Lighting. Right now, we don't have any. Is that my, that's my understanding, right, going from. On the Alameda across to the other side. When we cross one fifty six. Is that something that the ad hoc committee would be um looking at, or is that something that we can address here?
So the lighting plan is for the site itself and not for the right-hand turn lane. Um but for act- actually on the the project site.
Right, my thought is that we have a sidewalk there, but do we have adequate lighting? And um my thought is, let's incorporate in lighting into this agreement. Um with the right-hand turn lane for safety purposes. You're putting in bicycle stalls, you're doing EV, that's gonna. Produce more pedestrian, more people crossing the street, I think it makes sense for us to incorporate. That into this somehow to make sure that that is covered as well.
At least on the site side of the street or on the other side?
Um on both sides.
Both sides.
Yes.
That, well, and it could, keep in mind, there's no crosswalk on the site side of the street across one fifty six. The pedestrians, bicycles, everybody, they have to cross the Alameda, and then, so it, that's a very good, I would say that's an excellent point. To add some lighting, to make sure that there's adequate lighting at that corner, and that seems like it would be a good. Condition, or however you want to, condition of approval or or or.
Well, and staff it, staff, staff has even identified uh the benefits of a lighted crosswalk.
Yeah.
Additionally.
For save for safety, and I'd point out that we did have a fatality there a number of years ago. Not that many years ago, of someone trying to make it to the hotel or something, crossing the street at night, dead. So it's safety is a concern, and lighting would help, I think are both of your points, right?
Okay. The other piece um with that is we, here in town, we have a mishmash of our lighting. If you go through, there's four or five different lighting scenarios here in town, and. I would like to ask that we coordinate that and make it look like the downtown lights.
And but by downtown lights and all.
Third Street.
I know, but but you're you're referring to the the light standards in the poles in the in the sidewalk area, right, streetlights, right, okay, I agree.
So any uh changes or modifications uh to the development agreement? Uh just you would need to include that as part of the recommendation that goes uh to city council.
Okay. Um let's finish with the, this is just commission discussion, then we'll open it up to public comment, so if they can take notes, and then we'll get to them in a second. Are you done?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sanchez, do you have any thoughts from based on the staff report before we open up public comment?
No, no, I I think I'm I'm with uh Commissioner. Chris Margarana, where we um, I'd like to get more educated um before making eh any further recommendations. Um clearly, there's a lot to digest here, um and. We got one shot to make it right, so let's go ahead and do do diligence.
That's right. Okay, I think that'll conclude the um. Commission's response to the staff report, let's open up public comment, and Liz, as you said, I think the applicant has their hand up, let's start with the applicant. Or applicant representative.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Dr. Dala, I'm the developer for the gas station. Well, thank you so much for putting this on agenda. This project has been waiting for almost uh, I think, twelve years. After the lawsuit from the hotel developer and, you know, lot of other things, so as, you know. This is uh not my first development, this is my, I think, sixth gas station and um couple of hotels. I have never seen such an incompetent city, to be honest. From staff level, like right now, you know, Ariel is doing a wonderful job, but before, as you guys said, you guys have turmoil. We have been waiting for months and months, and we are paying for this right turn lane upfront, right? And now, we are in the end position to receive the money, which is twenty thousand dollars. If we put eight hundred thousand into any investment right now, at six percent or seven percent. Twenty thousand is the interest that I will get on my money, so now we are discussing the same thing. But it should not be even in the development agreement, because this is a part of reimbursement agreement, which we. Already has signed agreement, and I think city attorney is here as well, and he can tell. Reimbursement agreement has already been set, how the dollar value gonna come back to us. If the development gonna happen or not, how the fair share gonna be calculated, it is already into the new traffic analysis. Into the new right turn lane reimbursement agreement that was revised. Now, other point that I want to say is. You can see our frustration, we have our grading permit that has already been approved, the loan has been approved. And we are just waiting for development agreement for past three months. I have never seen a city where development agreement is based on. Conditions of approval, which has already been approved, right, we have came to the um public hearing multiple times. Now. We have to go back and run around the reimbursement agreement again and change that. Or look into the terms, I'm not ready to change anything on the reimbursement agreement, it's a signed legal document. Number two, um regarding the lightning on the uh right turn lane. So if the staff and the commissioners have done their homework, and if they see the current plan that has been done on the right turn lane. We have spent over two hundred fifty thousand dollars as of date right now, with the engineering and with the Caltrans. And multiple meetings with at least twenty rounds of back and forth on the design of the right turn lane. And they have already incorporated all the lightning standards, because this site, even though it is in the city. But Caltrans is requiring this right turn lane, and that's there. That they will require all the lightning needs to be there, now we are talking about downtown lightning on across from our project, when our project gonna lit. Right, as per the city lightning standards, that's gonna be enough lightning there, and also the right turn lane. Gonna have the lightning, Caltrans never allows any passengers taking a right turn lane without a light, so. Today, like I have, to be honest, like I have never seen. Uh development agreement, what we normally get is as the developers, right, okay, conditions of approval, we go into a building stage, building plans have been approved. Staff sends us a development agreement, we review it, we sign it, and we are done. Right, so this is our frustration that is coming, so we want to develop a beautiful everything, we changed. Literally our plans to have all historic things, everything, right? And now we are still delaying the project, like, I don't know, like, whatever, like uh the the city manager now sent us, we said, okay, everything is fine. There are a couple of things that we looked into, but like, we are more than welcome to do anything possible, but we not gonna now. You know, take away our clothes and say, hey, city of San Juan Batista, rip us as much as you want, because we are already getting ripped a million dollars. And I'm not willing to do that, honestly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on behalf of the applicant? N- no hands raised, right, Liz? Okay. Right, but as far as the applicant, I'm going, pardon? But I I'm I'm just, I'm just working on the applicant right now, so if there's no one else on behalf of the applicant, then let's go to um general public comment. Are there any um comments from members of the public in chambers? Okay, thank you, Cara.
Yeah, uh.
Wait, no, not yet.
This is Harmon, um one of the partners with Doug Dave and Dala.
Okay.
Just spoke, and I just wanna mention the same thing, that. We should concentrate on development agreement versus going back to reimbursement agreement, that has nothing to do with it. All the conditions were met already. Uh CUP was already approved, the conditions of, we already know the conditions and we're willing to do. Everything what was discussed, as Mr. Dan De Vries, you were there at the last hearing and. Uh according to your suggestion, we changed the whole plan. Now, the design looks beautiful, uh as you have approved. Everything according to the city of San Juan Batista, you know, we wanted to, we had a completely different plan. Twice, we changed it, we're trying to match with the buildings across the street, everything that we can do to. You know, make the city of San Juan Batista looks more pretty or better. But like we said, let's talk about the development agreement and move forward, please.
Okay. Thank you, Harmon. And it's a way better design. Fred 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 did a great job. Of course, but we gotta, we're in public comment, so. Why don't we, why don't we continue on public comment? Cara, I think you had some words.
I I think I've attended all of the meetings.
I think you have to, yeah.
For this guest.
I think you have to.
And I'm really more interested in the aesthetics of it.
Right.
And I don't know if we're gonna go forward with lighting, but. Uh you should know that the light poles, Rebecca McGovern had the uh name of the manufacturer.
Yes.
And the last time we used it, they were still in business, and so along Creek Bridge, what is that, Second or First Street? Those are the light poles, McCullumy in front of the apartments there, those are the light poles.
Right.
So we may have the file in the Luck Museum, I'm not sure. We can look for it, or maybe the city has it somewhere in their archives, but um last time we looked, they were still in business. And then I have a couple of other questions.
Uh are just on that, um I already checked with Vanda, and there's a foundry actually that has a. Cast mold of the ones that were originally done on Third Street.
Yeah.
And I think the uh Creek Bridge. Emulated that, and maybe in front of the Mission, whatever.
Uh huh.
Um apartments on. McCullumy, but I I know the idea, and I agree with that, that there should be continuity between the light standards um that are in the main part of town, the historic districts continuing on to the other side.
Was instrumental in getting the lights downtown, you may have noticed. That there is no electrical wires, everything's undergrounded.
That's right.
And she was instrumental in that as well.
That's right.
Okay, um. I I maybe this is after the fact, but uh the restaurant, is that? Is it authorized to be a formula restaurant, or does it have to be an independent local person?
It needs to comply with the city's formula business ordinance, I think Ariel will tell you, Ariel, do you want to address that?
Uh yes, it is, and there is one of the conditions of approval that, and it has, it's required to um comply with the formula retail requirement, so anyone. Who comes into that lease base would be subject to the ordinance.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I didn't see a rendering of the monument sign, but a lot of time was spent. Discussing the monument sign, what it was gonna look like. We wanted to make sure it looked rustic, but then you still had to have all the pertinent information on there.
Right.
Seventy six and all of that.
And the price per gallon.
Um, did we formulate the final design for that?
I I'm I'm with you, I rem- I remember details of that and the those plans that we looked at so long ago, but I haven't seen a detail on the monument sign.
Uh as part of the site plan, um let me look to see what page. Oh. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, doesn't look too rustic, but if it's subject to review, that's good. Okay, so.
Pay A, yeah, pay A dash, yeah, uh three point three.
So, we still have a chance to work on it, hopefully. Right? Is that the final? Oh, yeah. Okay, all right, sorry, okay, so hopefully we'll have a chance to work on the monument sign some more. And then the landscaping, was that reviewed by the um HRB Planning Commission? Because what I saw in there, a lot of little lollipop trees, and that tax property, that was a botanical tree wonderland. Before it was totally decimated, so hopefully we can get some real trees. Uh in there, and not just a little, you know, what I call lollipop trees, that's all I have at the moment, thank you.
You, Cara. Any other uh public comment, Chambers has cleared out. Zoom, no hands are raised, okay, thank you, Liz. Um. Discussion comes back to the commission. I haven't said anything. I'm going to. What's the best way to organize my thoughts and comments? First, um. As the applicant and indicated and and um. I mean, now I've I've got a lot of familiarity with this project, let's just put it that way. Going back a long ways. And um I think it's absolutely heading in the right direction. I think I'm thrilled with uh the new design that Fred Avila came up with. It's beautiful, it has. Parody with the windmill market development, which I think should win an award in its design. So I'm really happy with the way it's going. Um having said that, uh well, here's some other things I'm happy with and then I'll talk about shortcomings or where maybe some room that we still need to um move towards. I'd love the idea of an ad hoc committee to oversee. Remaining issues relating to design, finishes, uh particulars, I'll call it, instead of holding the applicant up any further. I think an ad hoc could um move swiftly and adeptly, be responsive. And uh I'm really a big fan of that concept. Um as regards the existence of an ad hoc and the scope of the ad hoc. I think that it might be something we take a look at doing tonight. To assist with any final. Um comments that are incorporated into these, this development agreement before it goes to the city council. I'm being very cognizant of timeline. Of Dr. Dala's um feelings towards getting this thing moved forward. So rather than um. So and this this harkens back to what I said to you earlier, Chris. Both on the phone and tonight, um can we any? Further evaluation, let's call it, or analysis by you? If that could then be reflected in comments by an ad hoc to staff? And we empower staff to reflect those additional thoughts and analysis prior to this document's arrival at council? Would that be?
Asking me?
Well, I'm kinda just thinking out loud.
I would say yes.
Query whether that could um be efficient and get and address your concerns and still get this to council on time and not hold up the applicant further.
Yes, I I I certainly would be open to that, I have, would not object. I I feel very comfortable with the staff that we have in place today.
Yes, yes.
I and I I I heard applicants loud and clear and they're not wrong. Anything they said, I don't, I I I think they're right on the money. And I I was on the city council when this project first came up.
I know you were.
And but voted for it then and I'm in very much in favor of it. And I love what you guys have done visually. Uh it's just, we're just, it's this unfortunate circumstance that we just, we, I as a commissioner. Have not had an opportunity to to review the material and so I I I'm just not comfortable with it. But but what you're describing, I am, I I think I would be very comfortable with, cause we're still able to make that input.
Right, right. Well, um along those signs, and I know this might be a little bit unorthodox, but I would like to, on my own motion, um appoint that ad hoc committee tonight. So that they're in place now to work with staff. Um to do any of these final uh modifications and revisions prior to it going to the council, which I think is in a week or two, isn't it?
Yes, we need uh to produce the packet um on the eleventh.
Okay.
Um and so we will need to meet prior uh this week.
Okay, great. So uh for that ad hoc, um I'm going to nominate or appoint, um I've given this a lot of thought. Chris. On that, on this point, can I finish my point or are you gonna do? Or do you wanna, do you want to table my thing? Okay, go ahead, I'll yield.
Okay, um. To the applicant, with all respect, I understand your sense of urgency from a business perspective. I too run a. Corporation that does multimillion dollar builds. So I do understand. However, I um am going to disagree with you on a number of things. Number one, this is a new commission. You haven't spoken to three out of the four of us that are sitting up here. So and what I'm gonna tell you right now is that we represent this town and the people that live here. We're not elected, but we represent this people here. And we're gonna do our very best to make sure that we get the very best for our community. And you should, as incoming. People or a business into this town, respect that because you're going to get those very same protections in the future. Now, with that being said, I understand business as well. And I understand you not wanting to change things and I understand that historically, things have not been. Good, but what you also have to take a look at is that this city council has made a number of changes which you are now benefiting from. So I would like you to bear with us a little bit longer as we continue through this. I for one can tell you that I very much want your business here. I think it's needed, I think it will be a huge benefit to us. And I think in the long run. You know, it'll be great for all of us, but we just need to walk through this. Number two, I wasn't asking to completely redo your reimbursement. I was asking about how we can reimburse you, not let's redo this. Now, in regards to the lights, I can understand that stress, but. Um, you know, I'm gonna ask the questions, I'm new, so please bear with me. And if with that regard, I would like to say that I believe that we should focus more on. The, any modifications that we need to make because the um applicant has been in the loop for so long. I feel that we need to send this up to city council. We do have great staff now, they have done their job, they have done their diligence. And they are recommending that we approve this, right? Or send it up to the city council.
Yeah.
Okay, um we're right in the middle of of process and I was in the middle of my comments. And I had you, I gave you the opportunity to make yours and I'd like to make mine.
There's, yeah, you wanted to make a motion right then.
No, just for the ad hoc committee, but then I have a whole bunch of other stuff. I just wanted to get the ad hoc in place because if the ad hoc is in place, then it obvious the need to do a lot of other stuff tonight. That was the idea there.
Uh through the.
You can vote no on the the existence of a of an ad hoc, I think it's very efficient, but. This is getting off, this is getting off, this is getting off thrown off.
Uh it's not that I disagree with an ad hoc, I would like to have more discussion before we vote on whether or not we put an ad hoc committee together.
Just whether an ad hoc should exist or not? I don't understand.
I would like to have more discussion.
Okay, well, okay, let's, let's, let's table the ad hoc then, the the concept of an ad hoc. I don't know why, but okay. Um moving on then with my overall um comments regarding the current. How the development agreement is currently. Drafted, um there's a couple of things that I think are missing. The first is the existence and incorporation of a visitor center. Um a visitor center concept that this property was always a part of the project, including um most notably by Dr. Dollar's predecessor. Harvey Dadwall and if uh our city manager now is predecessor, Roger Bemzley, there was always. The idea was always to have a visitor center and I think that it, that need of this community remains. What the visitor center would consist of and its nature and so forth. The details um. Could be determined later, but the the fact that this property provides an opportunity to. Market or attract motorists who are stopping there for gas and provisions further into town. To the mission, to our historic district, et cetera. I think is a prime opportunity that we need to take advantage of and this current DA doesn't even mention it. And it dropped out somewhere along the line over the years, but it was always a part of the original concept, so I'd like to see that incorporated. Um another. Issue is a contribution towards a lighted sidewalk across one fifty-six. Pedestrian crossing of one fifty-six is very dangerous, to put it mildly. Um we do have San Juan School over there. We are creating um an attraction for kids to go across the street to get to the convenience store, et cetera. So I think in in the past, again, I've got a long history with this, this concept, uh there was even talk about how can we get. Um pedestrians underneath the freeway down there, further east, there's an under crossing, can we get, can we build something that goes over the freeway? Just pedestrian crossing across one fifty-six has been a longstanding um concern of the community. And I don't think we can completely address it, but a contribution towards a lighted sidewalk, I mean a lighted crosswalk, the flashing lights might. Be something worth looking further into. Um a question I also had is that um the original conditions of approval. Required uh prior to issuance, I think of a building permit, a submittal of a landscaping plan. To follow up on Cara's point, uh the submission of a landscaping plan by licensed landscape architect. I want to confirm that, number one, that condition still exists. Number two, a landscaping plan has not been submitted by licensed landscape architect. Number three, that that is something that will therefore be forthcoming. And if so, then there will be an opportunity to look at. Additional details regarding landscaping at that time. And if an ad hoc is put in place. It seems like that would some be something that uh the ad hoc could address as well to again streamline this and not hold them up additionally, but to provide oversight. Um next on my list is. The issue of identity, I'll call it, for this project. Um if I said to everyone listening here now. Um let's all meet at three oh one, the Alameda. You would say, what Victor, three oh one, the Alameda, I'll meet you there. You would say, I don't know what you're talking about.
Exactly.
Right? But if I said I'll meet you at Windmill?
I know, I I know without that, yeah.
That's my point. I don't like the identity of this project to be something the Alameda. I think that's the same thing as saying, as no identity. Whereas in addition to its exceptional design, materials, finishes. The 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 development we know as Windmill. Is a grocery store and a strip center, but its identity is unsurpassed. Everyone knows, everyone in Samuel County knows where the Windmill is, people in Hollister know the Windmill, the Windmill, the Windmill, let's go to Windmill. It's got great identity. And I think that this project has an opportunity again to have great identity also. On the issue of identity. And Cara mentioned it, Tax Corner. When there was an opportunity to go a different direction in design. I reached out to the uh with Fred Avila, he and I. Reached out to the Historical Society and asked the question, what was that corner used for historically? What was, what's its history? And we learned that it was Antoine Tax's sheep farm. Antoine Tax being the old Italian immigrant. I think he may have even been like the first mayor of San Juan or something, but he built the Tax Building on Third Street where Anacafusion now is. He has a granite little thing at the cemetery, I forget what you call those things with his marble bust in it. Antoine Tex was a notable individual, very, very historic person and that was his sheep farm. And I I loved that for identity. Because it's historically accurate, we are the city of history. The Sheep Farm vernacular, I think, is a great fit for the community with Windmill, Caddy Corner to it. So if we had an old barn looking grocery store and strip center and then a sheep farm looking gas station and convenience store and restaurant, that seemed to make a lot of sense. Um to us, and I think that's why that design and that concept was very well received when they presented it, as Cara noted. And I think Cara still likes the design. So therefore I like uh Tax Corner infinitely better than something or other, the Alameda. Which I think is meaningless. So I would very much uh be in favor of having the identity be formally recognized or implemented in the DA and otherwise on signage and the sign program. On anything having to do with this project that it um shall be known as Tax Corner as opposed to the alternative, which is just the generic Alameda. San Jose has an Alameda. And the Alameda in San Jose is crazy long and nobody knows anything about the Alameda, so I don't like that. Um lighted sidewalk, visitor center, the name, right hand turn lane, we talked about reimbursement agreement. We talked about. Um and lighting, I agree that lighting as per Commissioner Retinal's comments, lighting standards. Poles should be, and Cara's point too, should be the same as are on the rest of the historic district on Third Street. Meaning those great poles that have been emulated at Creek Bridge and that Mission Gardens Apartments. Um so that there's continuity, cause really what we're doing is extending almost visually and aesthetically and and the feeling of things, our historic district. Across the other side of the highway. And if there was continuity then, design wise, between the two, that would make a lot of sense. So the actual design of and selection of those light standards. Uh and incorporation of those light standards into this project, site. Uh adjacent to it and the and the right of way and the and the sidewalk and so forth, I think would be another thing that would be appropriately overseen by the um ad hoc. Should that uh concept pass by a motion tonight. So those are my comments, um. But let's get back to housekeeping. Or structure or procedure, I should say. I suggested um the opportunity to form the ad hoc tonight. Instead of in January and increasing the scope of the ad hoc to include not just these aesthetic design issues going forward, but also. To be available now, December second. For to work with staff to get um some of these comments that are coming up tonight. In shape for the document to go to the city council at their next meeting in a week. And that was um my suggestion and Commissioner Retinal objected to that, so. Do you wanna state your objection or um? So I'm gonna make a motion. Uh did I? I'm, you're, no, it could be, like. You, we were, we were. Ab- absolutely, I'm just trying to get that ad hoc thing figured out, but of course. Eddie, what do you, what do you have to say about it? So let's just table the ad hoc idea then for a minute.
Okay, well, um definitely lots of entertainment going on today. Um and. I just, I would like to say and and seriously, um you know, speaking for myself that. We do want this project to go forward, you know, and we do apologize. Well, speaking for myself, I, you know, I could only. Try to wrap my head around the frustrations of how long this has taken. Um but as stated earlier, we got one shot to make it right and that's where we're drawing the line. That's where my morals stand. So um as far as everything that's being presented, it's a lot of data. It's a lot of great data and it's really appreciated. Um and moving forward, I have no idea, I mean, I have no. Reservations that we're gonna move forward as well, well-oiled machine, but as Commissioner Brett Nell stated, um. There's been a lot of turnover and you know, that's within not only us that are sitting here in planning, but also staff. And management of this great city of ours. So, you know, yes, I apologize that some of this frustrations is. Collateral damage because of what's going on. However, um we are all on board to righting the ship. So um that's pretty much all I have is our dedication remains to the city. Our dedication does remain to partners that are willing to come in and, you know, generally be. Working with the side by side and I do, again, I do apologize for um any frustrations, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh through the chair, um I just wanna make note that uh both the applicants and uh the architect to have their hands raised. I don't know if you want to hear them after your guys' discussion.
Elise wants to say some more stuff, so go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um I'm I'm not opposed to creating an.
I'm I'm not opposed to creating an ad hoc committee. I just want to finish the communication here between us so that we're all clear on exactly what they're going to be doing beforehand. And I don't feel that we've had that communication yet. Speaking for myself and truly understanding, you know, what's been going on with this organization and the applicant, I I see this as an opportunity for us to kind of turn it around. I see this as an opportunity for us to trust the staff and all of the work that they have done and just make or request modifications to send up to city council. I don't think, I don't know if we did the ad hoc piece, would we still need a vote of the commission in order to send this to city council for their approval?
That's a, that's a good question. And maybe that's what this suffered from was just a lack of clarification or lack of clarity. I think the idea would be a recommendation by the commission or motion or both to send the DA to the city council for their next meeting with any modifications to the document as it currently exists to be prepared by staff in whom we absolutely trust. But final approval of those changes and modifications to be provided by the ad hoc to say, yeah, you got it right. Based on the discussion that happens tonight, the further discussions, we're not done discussing. We have applicants going to hear some more stuff, there'll be more deliberation. But just a structural procedural idea whereby we have planning commission on twelve two discussing the DA. There's going to be some adjustments. Adjustments get approved by the ad hoc as, yep, that reflects December two, what happened in that conversation. Then it goes to the council on twelve whatever for final approval. It's just oversight of, as opposed to the alternative would be to say, here you go, staff, good luck figuring all that out.
Through the chair, can I?
Can you hold on just one sec? So does that make sense?
Yes.
Do you like that?
And yes, I do.
Okay.
With that being said, what I also like is the fact that you said our deliberation on this and what we want to have included or amended or modified is going to continue on.
Tonight?
Tonight.
A bunch?
Yes.
Right.
Good.
Okay. But do you see how the existence, if we do this, then, okay, all right. Okay, Ariel, go ahead.
Sorry, just for as as you deliberate, just making sure that as you create that ad hoc, you include all the recommendations you want the ad hoc to address in the final document to the city. And additionally, if you could include that that once those have been done, I need to amend the resolution by the planning commission. And so, you know, authorizing the authority through the chair to sign the amended resolution and updated draft of the development agreement and exhibits that will be attached to the city council meeting.
What we're trying, what we're trying to do is create craft an alternative because the natural thing to do in a situation like this is talk about it for a long time, kick it back to staff, and let's revisit this in January, right? Well, that puts the whole thing a month behind because then the council's not going to get it until February. So how do we cut through that and and keep this thing on track? And that was the idea. But Ariel, that point is well taken and we'll and we'll do that. Chris, you want to say something?
I'm just, I'm I I I like the idea. I'm concerned about the my ability to perform as a member of any sort of ad hoc, given what I've got on the calendar in the next few weeks. So I'm just, I'm I'm.
I think I, and you and I talked about on on the phone. My, I, my expect, my thought is that Ariel's going to come up with some changes based on tonight that she just described.
Yeah.
Probably this week. You leave on Tuesday or Wednesday?
I leave Tuesday.
Tuesday. So whatever changes she makes, if you and I are that going to be on the ad hoc, she could email to us, yeah, that sounds great, and then off it goes.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at the scope of this. I mean, there's fifty, eighty pages here. And I'm concerned about my ability to get through that, the the volume of material. I don't know. I just, I'm, I have to be realistic about.
I understand, but we have.
Don't want to have another failure for these guys.
But we don't.
That's, I'm I'm just afraid that I can't get it done.
I understand, but we only have two options tonight. One is to kick this to January after further deliberations tonight, or the others to do something different. Is there an opportunity to do something different? Or are you insistent that this get kicked until January?
No, not at all. I'm, I'm, I have no issue with the ad hoc, but when you started to present it, you pointed at me and said my name, and I just don't think I can be a part. I don't want to be on the ad hoc committee for this.
For the design?
Yeah, I'd love to do the design piece later on, but that but this, this, this initial piece to it, I just don't feel that I can, that I'm going to be able to.
Okay, so then, well.
And I'm sorry, I, I, it's, it's.
But we talked about this on the phone, that's the only thing I'm not.
No, I understand. We did talk about it and and I.
So we'd have two ad hocks, one to do this DA review revisions. Now, hold on, we'd have two ad hocks then with your, your proposal, one for purposes of tonight and the second for design later on. And all I was saying was if we're going to create an ad hoc anyway, let's increase the scope to handle these changes. Anyway, I'm repeating myself. All right, so Chris doesn't want to do it.
Through the chair.
Can I just finish? So Chris doesn't want to do it. So I guess what we have to decide on is whether we want that just messes everything up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I I know.
I know, I'll figure that out.
Through the chair, I have another option to consider. You guys include all the changes and modifications you would like to see. And you authorize the chair to work on it and execute it and and not necessarily form a formal ad hoc at this time, but you just authorize that through.
That's fine with me. I'm totally fine with that. I'll be here, I can work with Ariel.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. See?
Told you I have your back.
Perfect, all right. So that we don't have to do anything with ad hoc tonight, and I'll just work with Ariel on incorporating the changes prior to going to council. And you and I'll do that over the next week or so?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect, great.
So so I move that we that we is this, I'm sorry, is this in the form of a resolution? Are we talking about a rec, a resolution here or are we to move for us to vote on this? Do we need it?
We do need a motion, but it's going to be a substitute motion because your original motion is not going to be us, how it was stated.
Resolution here.
No, there isn't a resolution, yes, so.
There there is a resolution attached as part of the packet. It would need to be updated. However, I just, before finalizing motion, I don't know through the chair if you would like to hear from the applicant or architect.
Well, public comments closed, including for purposes of hearing from the applicant additionally, but yes, we can hear from the applicant again. However, if I would encourage the applicant to keep the his final comments to within the scope of what was just discussed, which is.
Yes. Yeah, I'll be very quick. Thank you, Dan, thank you, everybody. I hear the, you know, so see, this is all about frustration, but let me tell you, like, there are great points to have a visitor center in the gas station. But we want to know what kind of visitor center are we looking at? Because that's a very broad term. I'm not putting nine million dollars to have a visitor center for City of San Juan. For two reasons. Number one, le, number one legally, a sequo impact requiring a visitor center, a demand for a city-run building. It is an unconstitutional exaction, a taking off a private property for public use without compensation, violation of California mitigation fee act rules, violation of Nolan Dolan Coors US Supreme Court decisions. So city cannot enforce any visitor center until we get paid. Yes, we are okay to put brochures for city on San Juan Batista, but I'm not giving eight by eight space. That is for clear, okay? So I'm not going to discuss anything about that. Unless the city has shortage of tourism information, there is a hotel that they have enough brochures there, they can do it. As Windmill, they can do it. Second point, I'm not naming my project as Texas Corner. And the reason for that is Antonio Texas, Tex, he was immigrated from San Francisco in eighteen seventies. He built his first commercial building in Third Street. And the Third Street building is still in there and it is called Tex Corner or Tex Block where he built all those buildings. I am putting nine million dollars of my hard earned money treating patients' teeth every day. And I don't want the sheep guy to take that advantage. If you tell people that that is the Alameda, everybody in San Juan Batista, from a kid to a young to a dead, they can come out of their graves and they can tell where the Alameda meets San Juan Batista. So the Alameda remains what the Alameda. And to put that into the context regarding the signage, can the city enforce the signage to the developer? And that cannot be done as per city attorney can tell, right? We really respect San Juan Batista, but this is getting out of our control. Because as per city guidelines, like, see, I agree, Dan did a great job designing this. This is amazing project. But, you know, I don't want my kids to say, hey, this sheep guy came to San Juan Batista and Dala is putting his hard earned money for tax. Everybody knows where the Alameda is. And as per California planning law and First Amendment protections, we are not obligated to name as Texas Corner. Thank you so very much, everyone. So, and other thing regarding the sidewalk is this should be in the Caltrans plans, not in the city. City cannot require a developer to have the access from the other side of the city to the to the gas station site. Yes, this city has been developed in eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds, and then they acquired all that. But if we are building a sidewalk, is the hotel guy paying for it? Is the copperfield going to pay for it? We are still paying for the copperfield development that was happened and we are putting nine hundred thousand dollars. Copperfield just got their permits and they're never going to pay us back. Then we're going to pay the city back. What we are getting is a penny, it's twenty thousand dollars. Yes, I'm okay to put a shelf up there where City of San Juan Batista, brochures and everything going to be there. And that has to be very well written. What brochures do we want? We don't want to encourage other businesses. If other businesses have discouraged our business to come into the city of San Juan Batista, I don't want any other business to take advantage of our site. And Starbucks has been on us for a long time to open up there. Yes, you guys don't want it, which is okay. We can still be into the Texas eighteen seventies city and don't enjoy the Starbucks which want to come. We have dropped the idea. I think probably I'm going to end up putting like a dental clinic up there. So, so whatever it is, whoever comes, right? So my first mission is.
Let's wrap this up.
So, so, but as per both these laws, please look into it. City Attorney is here and he can hear me clear and loud. So please, don't.
We will.
Yeah, don't put that into conditions of approval. Thank you.
We will look into legality as we always do. Okay, anyone else? I know there is no one else, public comments closed. You're ready for?
Fred Avila was, has had his end up.
Fred, really? Fred, just, I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow, Fred, unless you, unless there's something you're dying to say. Fred, can you hear me? Fred? No, okay.
I just time me, here I go. Just real quick, there has been landscape plans. There was a statement in there about landscape plans not being submitted. There's a landscapes, there's a set of landscape plans in the actual full set of drawings.
Brad, I know that, I know that, I know that. That was, that was not the reference.
Okay.
But just, just leave that alone, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out downstream. Okay? All right, public comment is now closed again. Chris, I think you were on the cusp of a motion.
Yeah. So form, I'm thinking the thought was that I knew that we that we authorize the chair of the planning commission to work with staff to make necessary modifications to the to the development agreement prior to the passing it to the planning, to the city council for for approval.
Commissioner Mortorana, may I ask you to modify that slightly? And I would like you to specify the changes requested at this meeting that we're about to discuss. I want that in there. I would like.
Like, like a to to include but not be limited to, dot, dot, dot. She wants a specific reference to some of the things we talked about. If you can.
I have some notes if that would help.
Ariel's got the notes, she probably, Christian.
Not specifically, but I I don't want specific pieces in, but I I don't feel that we've clearly clar clarified what changes we want. And I believe that we have to do that. And then as a commission, you're now, we know what we're requesting of you. You know what we're requesting of you and she knows so that you can get it done. We're all on the same page.
Right.
This is what it is we want.
But instead of wordsmithing something, should we just say consistent with the deliberations of the commission on December second? Okay. So your, your most, so there's been a question in your motion to say that these these future deliberations, blah, blah, blah.
The planning commission empowered the chair to elaborate with staff to update the development agreement with Alameda Enterprises consistent with the deliberations of the committee, or the planning commission, excuse me. And in order to provide to the city council a recommendation from the planning commission for the planning for the city council's upcoming December meeting.
Okay, great. Good motion. Pardon?
Do you have a second?
Chris is asking if someone wants a second as much.
I second that motion.
Okay, Eddie wants a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner, Commissioner Brett Knell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Torana?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Chair DeBees?
Aye.
Substitute motion carried.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, that was the end of the action items for tonight, and then we have planning manager comments.
Real quick, in addition to that motion, you're also accepting the sequo determination?
Yes.
Okay. It's just a friendly clarification.
Make a motion on that?
Can you, can you correct the two, two portions, the resolution with the development agreement and also the sequo determination as part of the.
That's a legality, that's important.
As a whole, my, my apologies.
No, that's, that's important, that's a legality that we have to do. We have to make the sequo findings tonight.
Okay, and so I move that we accept the sequo determination and that that be included in the material forwarded to the planning commission or to the city council by the chair and staff.
Excellent.
Do a second.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to confirm the sequo determination. Can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Commissioner Brett Knell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Torana?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Chair DeBees? Substitute motion passed.
Thank you for catching that, Ariel, because that is a legality that we overlooked. Okay, now we are at the conclusion of the action items and I think that we only have remaining city manager comments, city planner comments. Commissioner comments.
Chairman.
Want to go first? Sure.
I, I would like to ask you to take maybe an additional five to ten minutes to clarify what exactly we are asking to have changed. We talked about a lot of information here and I would like clarity on exactly what it is that we are going to be asking to be changed.
In the DA? And what, and what does that clarity look like, be bullet points?
Yes, I I don't think it needs to be down to the nth degree.
I don't think. So Ariel, or?
Can I? I think that I think that I I don't feel comfortable. I think there's been a number of ideas that I know Ariel's been taking notes on and I, that, that should be incorporated. I think, I believe there are a number of things that we have talked about here that don't necessarily fall within the scope of the development agreement, but rather the design review process. Of the development agreement, but rather the design review process. And so they're not, they aren't really appropriate to be within that that document, and I think there's. I I I believe that we can, as I said before, trust in staff and the chair. To have some clarity on that, but I I do think it makes sense to compile that information. By us individually, pass it to the chair and to staff, and then um review that individually, probably with staff. Uh after, as the, as they are working on it, it's for for the, to get feedback from Ariel, for instance, saying. Yeah, th- this, you gave me ten items, these five or six will fall, should fall within the the development agreement. These others are really more design review or sequel document or something else. Because I I I think that, I frankly, that's, we maybe should have started with a discussion about what a. Development agreement is, because we have not, as a planning commission, had a development agreement before us. At all, we we were seated in December, and this is the first one that's come before us.
I understand where you're coming from, I would just like it on the record, what it is that we would like to have changed. So, and I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you, and maybe that's where we can turn it over to staff and say, okay. Of these items that we discussed, what are part of this, and then we give the direction and what we want changed.
Yeah, so some clarification, um in the development agreement, there are the different exhibits, so as a development. Agreement as a whole, you um. You are, we're outlining, you know, what the consideration to the city, what the public benefit is, and and uh under. Section four outlines, um you know, the right-hand turn lane, and so that's the public benefit, some of these other items. Relate to uh different uh specific uh conditions of approval. Um and then we would need to review um with city attorney on the nexus. On whether it is something that can be done as a condition of approval, or whether it's something above and beyond. As consideration for a public benefit, um and and the, you know, just the legal. Um review on each uh specific item and.
Okay, so if uh if I'm understanding you correctly, you really need to take the details that you've um taken down tonight. Take that to legal, sit down and say, okay, what goes where, figure it out, and then you can make the changes.
Yes, as a, yeah, as a whole. What I've heard is lighting um at the corners um on either side. We've heard about the reimbursement agreement, and as part of that reimbursement agreement. Could there be some additional alternatives of how um the city essentially pays back? The applicant, uh that would, we would need to also work with uh the applicant on uh that aspect as well. Um because it is uh an approved um. Document, uh in addition, we heard about visitor center com-. Concept brochure area within uh the C store. The lighted crosswalk contribution, um the landscape uh plan, um staff would. Uh ha- I have seen that. Uh there's a grading plan submitted, I can I can review whether the aspects of uh an architect submitted landscape plan has. It has not been approved and signed off on it, I can say at that point, I I I can review that. We went back and forth about the identity and naming um. Tax corner, the Alameda. And, you know, we'll need to review that. And just the lighting of the project site in general, um as part of the um design review, the condition approval.
Okay, and part of my reason for asking this, and. Indulge me here, Dan, uh from a a. Someone that runs a business and understanding a business, I um actually agree with the applicant that I don't feel that we can. Uh force them to name their business a specific name, if he wants to call it, you know. Right, I I think that that's. Okay, well, I I I want to make it known that I do agree with the applicant, that he has a right to name his business, whatever he wants to name it. I wasn't on the uh commission when uh you guys stated, you know, what the conditions were of approval. If there was a visitor center in there, great, then we need to make sure that that's done, if it wasn't, I'm gonna leave that to you guys, but. If if it wasn't part of it, I understand why you want that, and I do think it's a smart idea, I think it's something that we can address later. Um once we get them in and once they start operating with this. That's just my take.
Um if it, we can't require anything that's not a part of the approval.
And I'm gonna shut up now, thank you.
Uh I don't think I have anything to add, I will, thank you guys for your patience, I know it's wearing thin. But we'll, we will, we're on it, we're working on it, I promise.
Eddie, anything?
No comments, thank you.
I have one planning commissioner comment, um. In general, just to plant a seed. By the city manager and the um city planner. I mentioned this to city planner already, but the. Heavy, heavy industrial looking like electrical stuff that's going in in front of windmill. Talk about aesthetics, could have been done so much more nicely. Could have incorporated landscaping to at least shield it, buffered a little bit, something, but you come into our beautiful city of history. And this beautiful, beautifully designed windmill center that I always rave about. And now you see these ginormous electrical boxes and electrical chargers, and it just is the opposite of. Historical anything, it looks like Moss Landing Power Plant or something there now, and it's like. And I love Chang, and I love Jim Gibson, and I love the center, and I understand the need for propriety of electrical chargers and all that, I think we could have eaten. Had our kick and eaten it too, and had all of that incorporated in a way that was more aesthetically pleasing. And in keeping with the identity of our town, it's just a really bad design, so I don't know. What design process was involved with those approvals, pres- presumably. There was some type of entitlement that needed to go along with that. I don't recall ever seeing anything. What's done is done, but you know, query whether there's any opportunity in the future. To have them plant shrubs or trees or something to kind of take the edge off that. Heavy, heavy industrial vibe that doesn't fit an old barn or the historic district at all, in my opinion, I didn't know, that was a very. Poor outcome to incorporate that, which is needed, again. But not designed well at all, we could have done better. That's my planning commissioner comment for December. And planning commissioner comments are done, what? Went already. No, but she started. It was when asking for the bullet points and stuff, that was planning, because we had a, we had a, but you can go again, I'm just, I'm just saying, I didn't, I didn't leave her out.
I just wanted to say thank you for indulging me um with my questions and comments, I. I really like things very clear and precise, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, same uh city planner.
So my um planning manager uh comments for tonight is that today um we've released. The twenty twenty-three twenty-three-one uh six-cycle housing element update. Fifth draft for for the city, it uh has a public comment period for seven days. Um it will close uh December ninth at five PM, um it is posted on our website, we sent out an email blast. There are some copies in the back, if uh anyone's uh interested uh in reviewing the latest draft. Um after that, we will be sending that data to HCD. Um we have done an informal review with them, and um. They agreed that we have uh met all the requirements, so now um. With after the public draft, they will review, and um I we should be hopefully getting. Um by the end of the year, our substantial conformance letter, with that, um we are trying to target to be bringing. Um in our January meeting, the the housing element for adoption uh to planning commission as a recommendation to city council. And after that, we submit, I believe they have ninety days um. To respond uh for, and hopefully we'll have a certified housing element at the very beginning of our twenty twenty-six year. And we will be out of builder's remedy.
Nice.
That's the end of my comment.
Good call. That's a good, yeah, builders. Um city manager.
I'm not on the agenda, sir.
Again, you got left off again?
Move to adjourn.
That doesn't know, no, of course, Ashley, anything you want to add?
No, I um thank you guys for doing your due diligence on the development agreement, and thank the developers for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you, and thank and thank the developer. Dr. Dala and Harvey and Fred, and um for the public participation, we got through it, and the work continues.
Move to adjourn.
Before, sorry, Chair, before you adjourn, we do have an item that you missed, future agenda items. You could table it for the next meeting if you like, but it is on the agenda. Table it.
Move to table.
Yeah, move to second.
Adjourn.
Okay, um there's been a motion to table, and then combined with a motion to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Retinal.
Killing me.
All in favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Marterana and seconded by Commissioner Brenton, Commissioner Brenton. Commissioner Marterana.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Aye.
Chair DeBries.
Thank you. Oh my gosh.